Good evening and welcome to tonight's Yukon City Council Municipal Authority. It is February twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three at seven P. M. Council chambers here in the Centennial Building, which is located at twelve South Fifth Street, if you ever want to come, in the great city of Yukon, Oklahoma. Tonight's invocation will be by Pastor Woody Burpo from Family Church, followed by the flag salute. Would you please stand?
Lord Jesus, thank you for today. Thank you for allowing us to gather. Thank you for such a great city. Thank you for all of the representatives here that are leading our city in such a great way. God, we do pray for all of the businesses, all of the residents, the schools. God, pray that your hand of blessing would continue to be on them. Lord Jesus, we just pray that you would help this meeting to run smoothly and that you'd help everybody that's making all of the decisions to advance the city and keep making it as great as it has been. Help them to make all the decisions with all the wisdom that they have, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Burpo. All right, roll call.
Selby?
Here.
Wooten?
Here.
Yonda?
Here.
Gilliland?
Here.
Zimmerman?
Here.
We do not have any presentations or proclamations. We have no visitors. Anyone want to speak at this time? Right, then we will recess as Yukon City Council and reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Item one A, YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agendas of the Yukon Municipal Authority by unanimous consent can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve: A. The minutes of the regular meeting of February seventh, two thousand and twenty-three; B. Payment of material claims in the amount of nine thousand six hundred dollars. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
All right, we'll adjourn as YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item one, Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agendas of the city council by unanimous consent can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve: A. The minutes of the regular meeting, February seventh, two thousand and twenty-three; B. Payment of material claims in the amount of one million nine hundred eighty-four thousand three hundred fifty-six dollars and fifteen cents. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Reports of boards, commission, and city officials. Mrs. Crutchmore, do we have anything?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Right, thank you. Item three, discuss discussion and possible action to approve or amend funding for a feasibility study performed by Opportunity Funding in the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars. So we're going to discuss and possible action. Do I have a motion? Do I have to motion it?
So moved.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, so we are open for discussion on this. This is what we just talked about in our in our study session. I want to say I have Mayor White out of Poto. It's not listed on that page, but they did this and they were able to get a new library out of that. Their city didn't have the money, and so they went through this company and were able to provide that for their community. And I don't know if you know how big Poto is, but it's not very, but it's a wonderful city, great mayor. Any other discussion on this?
Yeah, apologies for missing the 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 study portion, but I had a couple fairly specific questions. What is the total amount of the feasibility study?
Go ahead, Pam. Thirty thousand? Come to the microphone so that people can hear your beautiful voice.
Thirty thousand and ten from the city, ten from the chamber, and then I will be finding hopefully ten one thousand dollar supporters.
Um, I think I understand that the feasibility study would in part create a target for something new.
What we're going to do with them.
But are there any sort of preliminary ideas as to what those things might be?
There, I've heard some ideas. One would be like the farmer's market or a downtown arena. Possibility of working with the grain elevators and making that some kind of location that people could do events, and it would all have to be through a nonprofit, so a nonprofit.
But wouldn't it be a committee that would be formed?
Oh, gosh, yes, yes, yes.
So it not just one or two people or the city or the chamber would decide? It'd be a committee of people?
Well, with the feasibility study, all that will come out after those people are.
They're going to talk to those people and say, what are you willing to invest in? Because that's where the the money comes from, those investors.
And I believe just you said talked about Poto. Poto did raise one point four million. I don't even know how big it's a little bit. So anyway, that's we will know more about the after the feasibility study.
Very good, yeah. I'm a strong believer in private-public partnerships and relationships and and I think it looks good so far.
Okay, anyone else have any discussion?
So at this current moment, it'd be ten thousand dollars that the city would be on the hook for. Is there more down the line that the city would be responsible for?
We would hopefully be able to handle that through the chamber and some private donations. I, at this time, I'm not asking the city for any more for this.
And what he said there is discussion was that then you recoup that with the pledges and in fact cushion a little bit too through the pledges. You get your project done, plus more investment.
And that that is what happened with Poto. I think she was still spending the money, and I don't know if it was like five or six years ago that she did it, but she said that they still had money that she was able to do projects with.
So after it's all said and done, how much will the the city be out?
I think the ten thousand dollars. I can't think of anything else unless they wanted to add some more money to it, but I was, you know, I think ten thousand dollars would be what we would ask.
It says right here in this, not to exceed ten thousand dollars. If we were going to put any more money in, it'd have to come back to the.
Come back to the council again for another vote, yeah, yeah.
When they, I would presume that when they, I mean, the two examples you mentioned, a farmer's market or arena, something would require some infrastructure. Um, I would assume they include that in their their cost so that they wouldn't have to come back to municipalities and ask for more.
Right, right. I mean, yes, they would raise the money and that would be, this would have to be done through a nonprofit. It would not actually be through the city. It would be a nonprofit that would be. The chamber is not a nonprofit. We're a five oh one C six, but they can do a foundation with the chamber or we could get an organization here in town if there's a lot of investors that would like to be involved in this process. We could do a five oh one C three.
Any other questions?
You've asked all mine.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve funding for a feasibility study not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Four, consider a motion to proceed. You can go ahead and cheer Pam if you'd like. Okay, thank you. Consider a motion to proceed with abatement of property previously declared as a nuisance located at seven twenty Maple Avenue, LTS one dash two dash three dash four in Spencer addition, dilapidated properly property and demolished the structure on the property as recommended by the Assistant City Manager. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I appreciate you guys and what you've done. It sounds like it's fun with the economic development. It's going to be a blast.
Sir, we need your name and address, please.
My name is Gerald Kelly, seventeen twenty-three Ridge Mount Circle, Norman, Oklahoma, and I'm part of the property owner for seven twenty Maple. Um, at this point, I would like to bring you up to where we are on this. I appreciate the ninety days that you guys did provide for us. Um, it did include Christmas and Thanksgiving, so it took me a little while. And the property attorney found a few more problems with the title. So at this point, we have the petition in hand. We've got the service that we need to get done on this. I had a meeting set up with one of my family members that was coming down to do this. His wife got sick and they did not take the trip. I haven't talked to them because she's not completely stabilized yet, and that'll be probably this week later on that I'll talk to them. Um, but we've got the house in the same condition it's been in. There was a little bit of wind damage and I got to learn more about fixing and patching roofs, so that's taken care of. It's not dilapidated. There's three other properties on that block that all have holes in the roof and are all scattered about that. So I would ask for a few more. We have to have at least forty-one days to get the published notifications out. Uh, and the property attorney asked me to ask for ninety days at least so we could get this to the point that we can have the ownership in there versus coming in and taking down a house that may be very viable that I'd like to put my family in, but you know, that's going to take a little bit of time.
Okay, Mr. Horton, would you like to update us on what's been done to the property that you've seen?
In your packet about, I think about the sixth page down, it shows some pictures that was taken on the fifteenth. Uh, the inspector, Ken Silk, made a site visit today. He's still, the front door is still not secured, so.
The front door is secured. He opened it with his hand, opened it, reached in and closed it.
That's not secure.
No.
Well, we we can we can lock it, but the last time it was locked. I love that front door because it's an old, wonderful, nice little arch door. Would you not agree?
Well, we're here. We're here to talk about the building was not secure.
I can I can secure that if that's the only problem.
Is that something we've asked for in the past?
Nope, because before, under the state statute, it requires it to have not be boarded up, and we boarded up the windows of the kids that continue to break into. And after the front door was kicked in by the police department and they didn't call us, um, I put a board over, yeah, it was a whole nother story. I, it happens. It was a legitimate call. They were doing what they were supposed to do. I just wish it we'd known about it. Um, we boarded up the front door, well, took the door off and boarded it up, but under the state statute, boarded up doors or windows fits the dilapidated. So to pull it out from the dilapidated, but we can secure the back, the front door. I just didn't want anyone else kicking it, because at the time I did this, I was unaware that it was our local police department that kicked it in. I thought it was just some local fandals. One of the neighbors came and talked to me and told me about the story of somebody else saw what they thought was a fire, and then it's all all legitimate. Um, but if that's the problem, because like I said, I've got him on camera opening the door, reaching in and coming back out. You know, I, it's closed, it stays closed, the wind doesn't blow it open, but we can lock it if that's part of the problem. If that's the only issue with this house, I don't really think it's kind of, you know, tearing down a house because the door is not shut isn't exactly the good thing. Within ninety days that I'm asking for, it will be kept in code because that's been one of the chronic problems with this house. It's got its attention up there. And as well as making sure it fits code with everything else. But if that's the only problem with the house this.
Shall we address that?
Well, you've already declared it to be a nuisance. At the last meeting, you declared it. What was asked is to bring it back if, just to let you know where it was at and what was happening.
How many years again has this been in?
Many, many years.
Was it like twenty-three?
It was last lived in in eighty-nine.
Okay.
We were we were on schedule with your former city council or city manager, and COVID hit. And then that threw everything into disrepair and, well, not disrepair, but just didn't get it done. So we're on it. It's going to get done one way or another at this point, but I would like the time because I would like to be in the house that I graduated high school in and my grandparents were in. But if that's not possible, I'd rather like to spend my own money turning it down instead of having the city do it because, as you just did with the feasibility study, it's not always cheap.
With my rudiment math, it was thirty-four years we've been looking at this house that has been vacant, right?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, anybody else?
As there's several houses on the block that have been renovated too.
I understand.
Anybody else?
There's been no other changes since our last meeting, ninety.
The house met what I assumed, what I looked at as the state statute with this locked door problem. That was something I assumed as secured.
But we're, but we declared it a nuisance.
If you look at the pictures on the fifteenth, there's a hole in the roof on those pictures.
It's not there anymore. That's the one I talked about.
Well, the roof is not substantial. Uh, it is, you can see all he's done is kind of patched it, but it's not livable. It's not been livable. It has become kind of a little attractive a nuisance, is my understanding. Uh, the front door was not locked like it's supposed to be.
Closed and lashed.
Closed and lashed is not the same as secured.
No.
Secured is locked where nobody can have access. So we do believe it still meets the criteria that you, at the last meeting when we had this, you did declare it to be a nuisance. All we did was bring it back. You give them a little time and it's, we keep having a little time, a little time, and it's still ongoing. So there's nothing substantial has happened, if that's what you're asking.
Well, I was asking specifically what's what's happened since then. So we patched a couple of holes on the roof and that's it.
It's been repaired so that the house is not being deteriorated. Yeah, the first thing the house needs is a new roof. The thing's over twenty-four years old, probably twenty-six if I'm not correct. So what I'm asking for is time to get the title to go in there instead of spending money that I may or may not get back depending on how the judge goes. And that's, and I appreciate it because the same question you asked last time was, this has been ongoing and what's been the problem? The problem has been the garage that I took down, a rear house that I took down, a small house that I took out, and the fact that I just am lazy coming from Norman to mow, and that's been kind of the big problem. Um, one of the other things Ken would have told you about if he was here is that he complained about the cat situation. The cats weren't from our house. They were from some of the other houses on the block and one of our local lawyers, staff members were feeding them on our property. We got that solved, so that problem isn't a problem. There's not wildlife in it. There's not anything else going on. The question just becomes, is this going to be something you're going to come in and take the property when I'm trying to retrieve it? And the other two houses that you've done this to or the other two buildings, um, both were surrendered and they should be. If this house is empty inside, it's got some holes from the roof that's had to be taken, but it's all going to have to be taken down to the ground. Um, I tried to call Mr. Horton, left two messages for him, didn't get a response. I called and sent an email and didn't get a response to that either because I was afraid I'd missed this. I thought this was last week's or the week before's hearing, but this is not an ongoing health and safety issue. This is just a, do we want to worry about the grass in the spring? And I can guarantee you the grass won't be a problem this year.
If someone were to go into it like kids because the door's not secure and I have a problem with you thinking it doesn't need to be secured, would it be a danger?
You previously declared it to be a public nuisance due to those ongoing issues which are were recited and are shown here.
I'm sorry, could you reset those for me again, sir?
I said they had previously declared it to be.
No, I heard you. I'm just asking you what you think the dilapidated condition is because I didn't remember hearing that last time. I didn't remember them voting on it.
I don't have those minutes in front of me to read back to you, but it was at a public hearing and publicly cast votes.
Okay, so it was declared it dilapidated because of issues that were with the house? Because I would have fixed anything I knew as the door.
Absolutely, and given ninety days to bring it up, but they had previously declared it to be a public nuisance. The only thing before the body tonight is whether to proceed with abatement.
Oh, no, I understand, but there was nothing said last time that I needed to do, and it would have taken a phone call to fix this other issue, and Ken Silk does have my number, as does Mr. Horton. So it's not like I'm trying to avoid anything. I'm trying to get this solved. I'm trying to get people that spend money into, get my family into Yukon again.
Do we have any other questions or comments?
I appreciate your time, folks.
Uh, I do have a question. Um, I'm sorry, could you remind me your name?
Gerald Kelly.
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 Um, so Mr. Kelly mentioned the possibly having the opportunity to pay for the demolition himself. Is that an is that an option if the council votes to move on with abatement? Uh, I'm sorry, I'm asking the this this city stat.
It'd probably be better for Roger to answer this, but it is something that's happened before. I mean, you've had that occur recently. Another property owner did go forward and abate it themselves after you declared it to be a public nuisance. Uh, you have to judge for yourselves whether or not that that will happen here.
But if we go ahead and do it, then Alene's put on the.
Alene is placed on the property against whoever the owners are, Mr. Kelly, and whoever else is is the owner of record.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Right, let's vote, please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
All right, consider a motion to execute an updated IWRQ service agreement between the city of Yukon and IWRQ system as recommended by the Information Technology Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Item six, consider a motion to execute a commercial construction agreement between the city of Yukon and B and H Construction LLC for boring services as recommended by the Information Technology Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Item seven, consider a motion to approve a lease site agreement for a new singular wireless P S, uh, PCS LLC cell tower to be located at sixteen fifty West Vandeman Avenue, the Vandeman Water Tower property, as recommended by the Assistant City Manager. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, if you remember right, this is before COVID. It was brought before you for discussion. Uh, they're requesting to construct a cell tower on that property along I forty
Okay.
on the south side.
Do we have, do we have a timeline? I I'm, I mean, I know it's COVID happened, but um, start to wonder if they're holding the lease so nobody else can grab the lease.
No, no, because actually the lease is here tonight to be signed. It wasn't, it kind of went away and come back because of several issues and stuff.
Okay.
But it was due with materials shortages, my understanding, equipment shortages, so forth. I think there's somebody here to speak for.
I hear you.
Yes, so they could probably speak a little bit more than that, but this is actually first lease that's been brought to us to actually act upon.
Okay.
Do we have a question of her?
No.
Okay. Thanks for coming, though. Okay, let's vote, please.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Right, number eight, consider a motion to approve the bid and enter into a contract with Merritt Tennis and Track System in the amount of forty-one thousand five hundred dollars to repair and resurface four outdoor tennis courts located within the city park to be paid out of two thousand and twenty-two dash two thousand and twenty-three Parks and Recreation Capital Improvement Budget as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item nine, consider a motion to approve the bid and enter into a contract with Merritt Tennis and Track System in the amount of twenty-four thousand six hundred dollars to repair and resurface two outdoor tennis courts within Kimball Park to be paid out of the two thousand and twenty-two dash two thousand and twenty-three Parks and Recreation Capital Improvement Budget as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Item ten, consider a motion to approve the bid and enter into a contract with Art Pro Techniques in the amount, uh, Pyro Techniques in the amount of eighteen thousand five hundred to provide a choreographed pyro musical fireworks display on June third, two thousand and twenty-three as part of the city of Yukon's Freedom Fest Celebration as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, this is the same company we've used in the past, right?
Yes, I understand. You said June, but it's July.
Oh, sorry. Well, I think we ought to have it in June, too. Thank you. July third. You want to come address that? Thank you.
Yes, that's correct. That's the same company. It's it's the main one that's used throughout Oklahoma.
I I'm I'm afraid I may have my timeline mixed up, but there was a mishap, right? And then we were going to be reimbursed or credited for?
I believe we were reimbursed for half of that. Is that correct? Half of that.
So that already transacted and, okay, yes.
Okay, let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Item eleven, consider a motion to approve the bid and enter into a contract with Art Pyrotechnics Incorporated in the amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred to provide a choreographed pyro musical fireworks display on July fourth, thank you, at two thousand and twenty-three as part of the city of Yukon's Freedom Fest Celebration as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item twelve, consider a motion to approve the changes to the Yukon F O P Lodge one seven three contract that was previously approved by the city council on December sixth, two thousand twenty-two as recommended by the police chief. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, I, I have a question on, um, I guess it'd be, is there anything that, in the error that we're correcting that prevented the full implementation of the contract that everybody presumed was already in place? So since December sixth, it's all been implemented fully? I mean, the full contract that we presumed was in place?
The answer would be no. There were per, portions that did get implemented. None of this language change, uh, affected any of that, but there were areas of the contract also not affected by the language change that didn't get implemented until it will be completely ratified by both parties.
And then is there anything that, I guess, would need to be sort of corrected retroactively as far as any action?
None, that was part of the agreement. This is not a retroactive agreement. Um, this takes care of last year's contract. Um, it was all language only. We're already in negotiations for a new upcoming contract.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, let's vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Me?
Selby?
Okay, sorry, it didn't sound like Selby, yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Do we have any new business?
None tonight.
All right, thank you. Council discussion, we'll start with Councilwoman Yonda.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Wooten?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out and, and casting their vote. That's why, uh, what makes our country so great, that we get that option to go out and have our voice heard.
Okay, Councilman Zimmerman?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Councilman, uh, Gilliland?
Yeah, I, I'll just take a minute, congrats to Jeff Wooten on reelection. Um, and then I do want to address the folks in my ward and generally some people around Yukon, um, that, that we've heard you, we, we had an election, a ballot on a, on a G O bond and, and the answer was pretty clear. And I think the people Yukon are concerned that they don't want to pay more taxes on their property in order to pay for infrastructure. And, and I, I feel like offering an apology to those in my ward and, and, and around town that, um, not for asking the people to vote, uh, for the bond issue, but apologize that we got it so wrong. We felt like we had done the background and the, and the work and, and, and felt like moving forward, we were on the right track, but we weren't. And, uh, and so I, I do apologize for that, but I don't apologize for asking, uh, folks to vote for these things. There are things that we've got to have, things that we desperately need, the upgrades to our infrastructure, our roads, uh, and, and, and beyond that, our sewer and water systems, uh, some of our municipal buildings are falling apart. We've, we, these things have to be paid for. Um, and so going forward, we've got to, as a council, as a staff, work together to figure out how we're going to do that. Um, for the folks in my ward and Ward four, the top of my list is Wagner Road. It needs to be finished and, and, and fixed. Uh, beyond that, we need traffic relief and control in Garth Brooks and Tenth Street. We need millions of dollars in repairs and upgrades to our water and sewer system. The council is going to have to work hard with our city staff to figure out a way that these projects get done without additional tax revenue.[1661.84]